Shall we look unto the Lord? I think some of your faces, they're not so happy. I'll not take much time, is it okay? Be cheerful. Yeah, shall we pray? Shall we ask the Lord to speak to us? Heavenly Father, we come before you, and we just want to commit ourselves once again. We come to you because there is no other place for us, and therefore we come to you again and again, seeking your mercy and seeking your grace. And therefore, the Lord Jesus, we pray, Father, that you will speak to us from your word, and we are willing to listen to your still, small voice. We commit ourselves to thy gracious hands, and we ask all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen. So we are continuing the series of beholding Jesus. So what was the first one? The first, beholding Jesus, why? Because he is a greater person, greater than angels, Moses, and Aaron, and greater priesthood because of the greater covenant, greater tabernacle, and the greater sacrifice. And the third thing, the greater principle, the principle of faith, and the greatest hero, the Lord Jesus Christ. And the previous session, we have seen beholding Jesus to run the race. Not no extra baggage, no sinning, no impatience, and no, no turning back. Okay, we'll turn to Luke's Gospel. Luke's Gospel, chapter 10. So the title that they have given for this message is, Beholding Jesus to be at His feet. So we'll open our Bibles to Luke's Gospel, chapter 10. We'll read from verse 38 to 42. Are you all with me? Yeah? Yes or no? Yeah, we'll read alternately, yes. Now, it happened as the wind that he entered a certain village, and a certain woman named Martha welcomed him into her house. Was forty, but Martha was distracted with much serving, and she approached him and said, "Lord, do you not care that my sister has left me to serve alone? Therefore tell her to help me." And shall we read verse 42 together? But one thing is needed, and Mary has chosen that good part which will not be taken away from her. So the title, as I have mentioned, beholding Jesus to be at his feet. Now here we see the story. Have you remembered few instances where God spoke the name twice in the Bible? Here he says, what does he say? Martha, Martha. Any other place where God spoke twice? Samuel, Samuel. Yeah, any other place? Sorry? Saul, Saul. Why are you persecuting me? Basically, when the Lord is, you know, repeating twice, that means, you know, it is very important. Now here we see, they were in the same family. The set of circumstances were also similar. Yes or no? And the approachable to Jesus also is the same for these two people. But the kind of perspective that they had towards Jesus, and the decision that they have taken, you know, towards Jesus is totally different. I do not know whether you heard the story of perspectives. Have you heard of this story? No? Okay. I think there was this young girl. The father and the mother, they joined her in an university very far from the hometown. So she joined in the university, and for many months, there was no communication. So after so much time, almost an year later, then she decided she wanted to write a letter to the parents. So this is how she started writing the letter. "Dearest Daddy and Mummy, I'm so sorry that I'm writing this letter after almost an year, but before you read this letter, you need to first sit down calmly, you know, and don't be anxious, and gently and quietly read this letter." And then she started writing, "Daddy and mommy, I came here one year back, and you put me in the dormitory, and I was, you know, living in this dormitory, but do you know what happened? After a couple of months, one night, you know, suddenly the dormitory caught up with fire. And in fact, I had to jump out of the window from the dormitory to escape that fire. When I jumped out of the dormitory, there was this young, sweet-looking boy who was working across in the gas station. He was the one who came and helped me. He was the one who protected me, rescued me, and took me to the hospital in the middle of that night. And, you know, there was no one visiting me in the hospital, but this boy kept visiting me every single day. He was a sweet, young boy. Soon, we fell in love. By the time I was discharged from the hospital, there was no place for me to go because the dormitory was still being, you know, renovated. But this sweet, young boy, he called me to his home and gave a place for me to stay in his apartment. Though the apartment was very small, but, you know, I had good time over there. You know, we fell in love and we are making so much love. But you know, after some time, we decided to get married before the baby bump was coming up. But you know, Daddy, this boy was a sweet little boy. He doesn't belong to our faith. He doesn't belong to our religion. He doesn't believe whatever we believe. But I know because you are Daddy and Mommy, you'll be able to understand, and you are broad-minded. But you know, in the process, I was also caught up with an infection, a terrible infection. Now, since I have told everything, you know, I'm telling you the truth now. Listen carefully. There was no dormitory fire. There was no this sweet, you know, little boy. And there was no wedding that was planned. And there was no baby bump that is coming up. And there was no infection also. But having said the truth, you know, I wanted to let you know, and look at what I'm telling in the right perspective. I failed in all my examinations. I hope you'll be able to see in the right perspective. You know, sometimes it is important to be able to view in the right perspective. Even we see in Matthew's Gospel, when Jesus told that parable. We see in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 7, "The house that was built upon the rock and the house that was built upon the sand." Both the structures were similar. Isn't it true? The architecture, external appearance were similar. The challenges that these both houses faced, they were also similar. The same rain, and the same wind, and the same storm. But the outcome was totally different because one house was put upon the rock, and the other house was placed, you know, not on the rock but upon the sand. The instruction, the teaching that was given for both was the same thing, but the outcome was totally different. It all depends upon how we choose to follow and to behold Jesus with the right perspective. Now here we see Mary and Martha, they were very close to Jesus. And Jesus often used to visit the home. Where is it? It is in the town of Bethany, very near to Jerusalem. Whenever Jesus was passing by, Jesus used to visit this home. And who was the one who invited Jesus? Who was the one? It was Martha, isn't it? You know what the Bible says? You know, "Martha welcomed him into her house." It was Martha who went rushed before Mary, and she was the one who opened the door for Jesus to step in. And Jesus walked into the house of Mary and Martha. Maybe he was given a comfortable place to sit in, and Jesus sat comfortably, and immediately Martha began her, you know, her favorite dish that she planned. She went into the kitchen, and she started trying to cook different, different things. But what happened to Martha? The Bible says, you know, "In the midst of all this, the menu that you was preparing, she became impatient," isn't it? And that's what the Bible says. She was anxious, and she became impatient. And what did she do? She came to the Lord Jesus, and she was complaining to the Lord Jesus. What was the complaint? "Have you not seen how hard I'm working there in the kitchen? I'm not working for myself, but I'm working for you to make the best meal for you so that you'll be able to eat." Then the Lord Jesus intervenes, and he says something. "What is it?" "Martha, Martha, you are upset with many things, but only one thing is important. Only one thing is important for you." And he says, "Mary has chosen what, you know, chosen the best thing, and it shall not be taken away from her." My dear brothers and sisters, in our journey with the Lord Jesus Christ, there is an equal opportunity for every believer to be able to approach the throne of grace, yes or no? Yes. Equal opportunity. There are no favorites for Jesus Christ. There is no favoritism for Jesus. And the throne of grace is open for us, for every one of us, 24/7. But it all depends, you know, how we view this opportunity and grab this opportunity to be able to sit at the feet of Jesus Christ. Everyone has 24 hours. Some of you are having 36 hours, no? It is the same thing. Same God, same time, same opportunity, the same open door. But it all depends upon what we choose and what we prioritize. Look at Mary. What was the priority that she did? She started sitting at the feet of Jesus. If you have to really accomplish anything, if you have to, you know, really be used by God, I think there is only one secret. Nothing great. Just be with Jesus. Isn't it? And that's what Apostle Paul says. You know, after completing three missionary journeys, after establishing many churches, and the kind of miracles that happened there when he was in Ephesus, even the handkerchiefs and all the things, aprons, whoever is touching, they were getting healed. Mighty things, supernatural things. But look at the desire of Apostle Paul while he was writing from the prison. You know, in book of Philippians, chapter 3, verse 10, he says, "I want to know Christ. I want to know the power of his resurrection. I want to have the fellowship of sharing in his sufferings, and somehow I wanted to be like him." Look at the desire. I think you and I, we need to have this deep desire to be able to behold Jesus all the time. Sometimes sleep will dominate us. Sometimes the daily chores that we have to do, they dominate us. Sometimes the work schedule that you have, that will dominate us and try to, you know, deviate us rather than beholding Jesus. It may not be a bad thing that you are doing. You may be doing the good thing. Lot of activity, lot of good activity, but may not be the best activity in the sight of God. Martha was not doing a bad thing, isn't it? You know, she was preparing a meal for Jesus, not for any other person. But the thing is, she was distracted, not the best thing that she was supposed to do. There is a time that we need to spend time, you know, at the feet of the Lord Jesus Christ. You know, the Bible says, "Mary has chosen what is best, and it shall not be taken away from her." What do you choose? The time that the Lord has given for us. How do we navigate this, the daily burdens and the pressures? Do you know? It is important for us to redeem ourselves, you know, and spend time with the Lord. And that's what Apostle Paul says in the book of Ephesians, chapter 5. Redeeming the time so that we will be able to know the mind of God and to be able to do what is the best thing. Jesus says, "Only one thing is important." What is that thing? To be at the feet of Jesus Christ. She was taught at the feet of Jesus Christ. She was listening from Jesus himself. And even now, as we see in John's Gospel, chapter 14 to 16, when Jesus was talking about the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit is available for every one of us, isn't it true? There is no difference. He is our teacher. He will teach us all the things, whatever he hears from Jesus. He will guide us. He will be inside of us, and he'll be with us. But it is important to be able to silence ourself and sit at the feet of Jesus Christ. Only one thing is important. To be at the feet of Jesus. May I encourage you? If you're not spending time with the Lord Jesus, it is important to take time off, to spend the time with the Lord Jesus Christ. When I was a student, we were told, "No Bible study, no breakfast." Is it? What is it? If you haven't had your quiet time, no. Breakfast. I think that is important for us because we are in this journey. We are in this walk with Christ Jesus. It is important to be able to know the mind of the Lord Jesus Christ. We need to grow from one level of relationship to the next level of, you know, relationship. As we see in the Bible, the Bible says, John's Gospel, chapter 1, verse 12. What does it say? "Anyone who believes in his name, they were given the power to become the children of God." What is it? They have become the power to become the children of God. Now, what does the Bible say? In the book of Romans, chapter 8, verses 15 and 16, "We did not receive the spirit of fear, but, you know, we have received the spirit of adoption, by which we call Abba Father. The Spirit himself testifies with our spirit that we are the sons of God, the children of God and the sons of God, the adopted sons of God." Is there difference? And what does the Bible say? In John's Gospel, chapter 15, verses 14 and 15, "I do not want to call you as servants, but rather I would like to call you as friends because the servant doesn't know the mind of the master. But I have told everything to you." And then he says in verse 16, "You did not choose me, but I have chosen you that should go and bear food, and I appointed you that should go and bear food, and the food that will last for eternity." Now look at, we need to grow in our intimacy with Christ Jesus. Being a child of God is a wonderful thing, there is no doubt. But being a son and a daughter of God is even more wonderful, being an adopted child of God. And not only that one, you know, being a servant of God. Oh, it is really wonderful. "I do not want to call you as servants," but rather, he says, after staying with Jesus for three and a half years, when he was giving that last discourse to the twelve disciples, chapter 13 to chapter 17, he says, "Now I want to call you as my friends." Not that disciple, not a servant. "I want to call you as my friend because I have revealed everything, whatever I wanted to share with you." A friend, you know, with whom you'll be able to share the burden. And Jesus is sharing his burden. He's sharing his joy. He's sharing everything with these people, these twelve people. And he says, "I would like to call you as my friend." How does it sound? And then he says in the letter to the church at Corinthians, "I have one jealousy for you. I have exposed you to one husband, that is the Lord Jesus Christ." The point that I wanted to share with you is, we need to grow in our intimacy with Christ Jesus. If you have a closest friend, you wanted to meet him again and again and again. Isn't it true? And when he calls you, you'll be able to, even without looking at this one, you know, when he puts you in, when he calls you, you'll be able to recognize his voice. Maybe your mother's voice, isn't it? You know, why? Because you are so used to listen to that voice. Even in the middle of the night, when your mother calls you, you'll be able to recognize that my mother is calling. You know, why? Because you are listening consistently at the voice of your friend and your mother. You know? Jesus said, "My sheep will listen to my voice." We need to grow in the intimacy with the Lord Jesus Christ. Being a child is wonderful, but being an adopted son and a servant, friend, and even the exposed, the bride of Christ Jesus. If you meet any person who is engaged, they'll be always dreaming about only one thing. What is that one? They'll be dreaming about their wedding, isn't it true? Yes or no? Why? Because they look forward for that intimacy. And we need to grow in the intimacy with the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus was equally available for Mary and Martha. But Mary has chosen a better option, and Martha has chosen not a bad one, but not the best one. It all depends upon how we make choices, you know, to behold Jesus. To behold Jesus. Mary has chosen to be at the feet of Jesus. So what will happen when we sit at the feet of Jesus? We will learn of him. We will listen to him, and his voice will be able to easily recognize, even you are crowded with hundreds and thousands of people because the sheep will recognize the voice of the shepherd. You learn at the feet of Jesus. The second thing, what will happen at the feet of Jesus? We'll see Mark's Gospel, chapter 7, verse 24 and 25. Mark's Gospel, chapter 7, verse 24 and 25. "From there he arose and went to the region of Tyre and Sidon, and he entered a house and wanted no one to know it, but he could not be hidden. For a woman whose young daughter had an unclean spirit heard about him, she came and she fell at the feet of Jesus." In the first instance, he doesn't want to be known by anyone that he was there. And now this gentlewoman, she came and she fell at the feet of Jesus, and she was pleading, you know, for the cause of her daughter who was demon-possessed. And Jesus says, "I did not come for you. I do not want to give the bread." And then look at this woman. She continued to stay at the feet of Jesus, and she started telling, "Even the dogs would love to eat the crumbs that fall from the table." There is everything that is available there at the feet of Jesus. And that's why Jesus said in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 6, "Go yourself and shut the door." The Father in secret, he sees, and he wants to listen to you. "Go yourself and shut the door." Shall I tell you one thing? When you shut the door, the door of the heavens will be opened for you. When you shut the door and be there at the feet of Jesus, the door of the heavens will be opened for you. I do not know what problem you might be having, what challenge you are having, but there in that secret chamber at the feet of Jesus, everything is available for you. Everything is available for you. There is healing. There is encouragement for you. There is confidence for you. And there is holiness. And there is everything that is available there at the secret chamber. Can I suggest, young people, don't waste this time? Rather than swiping again and again, again and again with your mobile, go shut yourself there in that secret chamber. The doors of the heavens will be opened for you. This gentlelady, Jesus was not willing, but she never left that place. She continued to remain there at the feet of Jesus, and she received whatever she wanted there at the feet of Jesus. You will not only learn at the feet of Jesus, but you will also receive whatever is required. Don't stop. Ask, it shall be given. Seek, and it shall be found. Knock, it shall be opened unto you. When you ask if it is not given, don't stop it, keep seeking. When you keep seeking, if you're not able to find whatever is required, you keep knocking at the heaven's door. The door of the heavens shall be opened unto you. At the feet of Jesus, you'll learn from him. At the feet of Jesus, you will also receive from him. At the feet of Jesus, finally, we see in John's Gospel, chapter 12, verse 1 to 5. We see in John's Gospel, chapter 11. What happened? "Jesus raised Lazarus from the dead." How many days was he there in the grave? Four days. But he came back. And now Jesus goes to this house where Lazarus was, you know, there. Mary and Martha were there. It was supposed to be a memorial service. Because of the intervention of Jesus, it became a thanksgiving service. And now Jesus did not demand anything from Mary and Martha. And suddenly, when Jesus came to the house, Mary thought, "What can I give to the Lord Jesus?" There was supposed to be a memorial service because my brother died, and he was buried for four days. "What can I give for Jesus?" She thought, she brought the precious one. She broke it at the feet of Jesus, and she anointed the feet of Jesus. And that is worship. And that is worship, the real thanksgiving. At the feet of Jesus, we bow down, and we worship the Lord. Thanksgiving is our response to what he did for us. Praise is our response to his nature, but worship is a response to his presence. She gave everything, whatever she wanted, the precious one. Other people were telling, this could be sold for a higher price, but she recognized, he is much more greater. He is the greatest pearl. He is the indescribable gift. He is the indescribable gift. May I encourage you, mighty brother and sister? We will grow in intimacy with the Lord Jesus Christ. Don't stop. Continue to behold. I'll tell you one small story, and I will close this one. There was this father and the son. They were walking in the park. And suddenly the father heard the sound of the airplane. So he shows the son, "Son, look up, look up. Now see, this is an airplane." You know, this is a huge one, and it will be able to carry hundreds of passengers. The little son looked at this one, and he thought, "This is so small, like a toy." And he said to the father, "I don't believe this is so small, like a toy." And he said, the father said to the father, "I don't believe this is so small like a toy. How can it carry hundreds of passengers?" After some time, one fine day, the dad woke up from the sleep and woke up his son. They both started going to the airport. And he was taking this little son closer and closer to the airplane. As the son was coming closer and closer to the airplane, suddenly the son recognizes, "Oh, this is such a big one. It can carry hundreds and hundreds of passengers." When we come closer and closer and closer to Jesus, He will not only become our Savior, He will be our healer, He will be our righteousness, our sanctification, our wisdom, our everything. And the Bible says in the book of Colossians, chapter two, verse ten, "And we are made complete in Him." We are made complete in Him. May I encourage you to grow in intimacy with the Lord Jesus. At the feet of Jesus, you will learn. At the feet of Jesus, you will receive. At the feet of Jesus, we offer our worship to Him.